We're good, are we good on recording?
To make sure everybody's all the way down.
Right there. Because I didn't do my phone today, I am not, I need to make sure. Okay, are we good now? Yes. All right, then it's seven four, call you for delay technical delays, we'll call it to order. If you get a roll call, the most impactful pledge.
For Chuck Williams. Here, and Nancy Klein here, Diane Law here, Matt Castillo here, Valerie Taylor here, joining us online, Adam McDowell.
Here.
Mayor Paul Gerra.
Here. I'm still here, if you stand if you're able with a pledge. Pledge what we're going to do in the United States of America. And to the Republic, we're going to take this one to the end of the conference, into this call, we're going to be enough of a small. All right, all right, welcome to the last meeting of the new year. New year will be in front of us soon and now, along with lots of holidays and everything else that comes along. Having said that. Is that microphone I was doing, I'm trying to figure. I need it for the captions, but can't see them, maybe I'm just shutting down it sound like. Get those hand better. See. All right, we're trapped them. So as I was saying, as we begin the, the last meeting of the new year, and lots of holidays and whatnot in front of us. We begin with public comment. Public comment, stand if you're able, if you can state your name and your address. This is for residents and taxpayers. You have three minutes to speak and then we will kind of move from there. We'll start inside the room, you know, we have at least one hand outside the room, but those who will have been. Trucked your way out here, I think you get priority. And so I'll start to my left or right, starting all the way on the left and then moving away across, so if you have a comment. None there.
I'm just here, but he's a relatively new resident, Mr. Stevenson and his wife, Chris.
I don't really have a comment, but.
Sorry, we don't, I don't have a comment right now, but. Okay, well, we're glad to see you, I have a comment to you, so welcome to church, glad to have. I still will move your egg one, just in case.
I'm good, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, floor is yours.
All right. So Greber fifteen twenty Williamsburg Place. Over the past few weeks, we've talked with a few neighbors. And I've had noticed that myself, but doesn't pay much attention about the fire whistle with the bow, whatever it bell, whatever we used to have. They certainly don't have it anymore, and they were concerned, a few neighbors were concerned as to. I guess have volunteers know, I, I guess they use radios or whatever, but they, they were just wondering if. It was ever going, is it broke or I don't.
So here, when I will turn to the, to the borough manager. Right here, I will turn to you, you are the, and both very department and public works, they answer that question.
So the siren has been disconnected due to the Westinghouse property being sold. We are trying to find a place to relocate the siren so we can reestablish the siren. But right now it's disconnected and we're trying to relocate the siren to a different location.
Okay, thank you, because they were just concerned, because it is volunteer fire company, how they. Gentleman. Get notified to.
Yeah, we have, we have pagers that were notified with, so we get the call.
Just wanted, I told him I would come up and say something, thank you.
Appreciate the question in the cut. Having, having heard from, from intern internally here in the room, we will move to externally. Folks online, beginning with, it looks like Kathy, if we're going to quote you over, I can't tell. So Kathy, as soon as you are able, please feel free to unmute, state your name, address and the minutes are yours.
Um. I, is it my turn, you know, when, when you come on. It takes a couple of minutes and you don't know what's going on, so I don't know if you realize that. So. If I could start my three minutes now. My name is Kathy Boardner and I live at nineteen twenty six Hampstead Drive. And I just wanted to thank Diane Law and Alex Graziani. I got to sit down with them, I think it was Friday. And discuss the deer issue. And I, I learned quite a bit and I really appreciate them taking the time to. Sit down with me like that, and I encourage other residents who. Have questions about things that are happening in the borough to do the same thing, to arrange to sit down with one or two council people and. You know, ask questions that you have. I, I really learned a lot about the deer issue. And I, I want to say that I, I agree with Diane that. If Churchill does something and other neighboring boroughs do not. Then we're really not going to see progress. And so I hope that what ends up happening is that there's a regional approach to this. Where but people from our borough and surrounding boroughs work on a solution. And. I brought it up at the Hampstead or the Royal Oak. Manor neighborhood had our Christmas party on Saturday. And I mentioned it to a few people and people are very interested in, in seeing something done. One of my neighbors described a deer looking in his window at him, you know, that's. It, it shows that the deer are really getting way too com- comfortable and posing more of a threat than that they used to. So I hope that whatever happens will engage residents. I'd like to recommend that there be some type of ad hoc committee. That brings in residents from our borough and surrounding boroughs to work on this, not, not just have our. Elected council members, but get residents involved, I think you'll get a much better outcome that way. There's been examples of where that happened, like the Allegheny. Land Trust buying the old. Air, the area that's now the Greenway, that involved local residents financing the purchase. The tree committee, what they did was an ad hoc committee. It was volunteers and you did have some council people on that committee. And what Churchill Future did when Amazon was threatening to build here, you know, we had an ad hoc committee that addressed that and. You know, we raised money outside of borough government, so that would be another thing that should be done is to try to raise money from residents and not. Just count on government to fund it. Thank you very much.
Kathy, and I will just point out, not only do I agree with all of your points on that. But in fact, that we had spoken before about having ad hoc committee, but it had put together an ad hoc committee, that part of the charge. To that ad hoc committee was to engage residents and to look at a regional approach. So I fully agree with you in your position, unfortunately. We need to kind of reconstitute that committee. That is that, that they did not want to pursue it. And so I need to, I can't just move one piece, it takes moving several pieces to kind of reconstitute that because I've got chairs that are. Somebody's got to move into the chair position, but nonetheless, I think your points are well taken, I only speak for myself, not for all the council. But for, for myself, I am point for point with you on kind of where we, where your solution lies. So thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you Diane and Alex for sitting down with me Friday, I really enjoyed that, it was a very good conversation.
Thank you. Moving forward, I think next up is Kate Carrigan Hill. State your name and address and we can, we can move forward, did I miss somebody else? Okay, first, we'll promote you, and my apologies, apologies to everyone, I normally have my laptop that I use to read. The, the closed caption, but today I cannot have it, so I'm using my phone, so I'm a little bit slower than normal.
Am I up?
You, you are here, Kate, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks. Kate Carrigan Hill at fourteen forty one Buella Road, and this pertains to Buella Road specifically, since it's a state road. I'm wondering if there is anyone, any entity designated to. Pick up the trash that lands against the Jersey barriers and on the hill. I've made attempts to do it, but it's really dangerous to be over there, and I didn't know if there was anyone that actually. Takes care of that on Buella. That's all I have to ask, thanks.
And outside of volunteer, I don't know, in our, in our public works.
Especially large items that we have considered the safety and hazard, we'll do that in William Penn as well. And other, other state roads as well as our roads, but I'm not sure over the years, mayor, if you guys have had opportunities to. To do that or.
Uh, we have, and if you don't mind, I'll make a comment to that, um, to Kate's point. We, the Churchill Garden Club meets the third Wednesday of every month, nine o'clock. We get spaghetti, borough voting, and we, we go out and clean out the litter along parts of our highways. Been down on Buella Road, but the demand power that we. Allow us to do all this, you want to do in that one day's time, but we'll certainly add that to the list. And, and I extend the invitation, anyone wants to come out and join us.
What day of the month is that?
The third Wednesday of every month, nine AM, we meet up at the Borough voting and we go out from there.
And do we provide safety vests?
We have safety, we have grabbers, we've got buckets, we've got bags. And we have big signs. You know, up at the top of the hill in the common garden area was provided by the state that says you adopt the highway. We have the sign that folds down, it says litter crew ahead, that we, you know, try to be as safe as we can while we're out there. I do appreciate that.
Can I add something to that then, because I think it's important to know that when I've gone over to, I mean, I li- literally right across the street from me. When I've gone over to do it, the speed of the cars going by is extraordinary. And I almost think you need, if it's possible, like a police car to sit there so that people would automatically slow down.
Not suggest that you go out there by yourself, but I have a big sign that's four feet by four feet triangle that we set promptly out there. But again, like you're saying, even when we're out there, they're coming by us at dangerous speeds and it does work.
And we, we certainly are, and the chief and the, and of course continues to try and work on speeding, it is a constant challenge for us and something I know they work extremely hard on. We are well aware of the speeds they're going down Buella, like, you know. The, the one thing about living in Churchill, of course, is we all live here, it's not, it's some big huge, you know, area, so we all know. And, you know, whether you're on council or not on council, you know, and so we're, we're constantly trying to figure out what are the best. And techniques that we can use, given the manpower that we have. But Kate, I will just tell you that there's no question, you know, that speeding down Buella is, is a serious problem. We've got speeding issues on, on other streets too, and we try to use the manpower that we have, we don't have a particularly large police force, so. Whenever we can sit somebody, we, we try to do those things, but there are some limitations, but I turn left on the Buella every, every morning. And, you know, I'm at that wonderfully dangerous spot that we all, will be the next conversation about traffic, right, on Newland and Buella. And so I, I appreciate your concern and certainly something that we continue to work at and, and is not lost on, on anybody on council or where within our community.
Comment if I can, please, please don't go out there and attempt it to clean up that litter by yourself, it's. Better if there's a larger crowd of people out there, and, and to Jay's point about the speeding. Farm station going on about acquiring those flashing speed signs that, you know, monitoring the speed, the flash, you know, what, what people are doing. Tell them they're going too fast, so we're working on those, we hope to have them at, at some point in the borough as near as we can.
Okay, and I'm, I'm going to move this forward.
Thanks.
Reserve that for a future comment as we come back around, because I think that's a, a point to have about kind of. Traffic mitigation and compliment and so forth, so I think, I think we could, we could refer there. Having said that, is there anybody else in terms of public comment? I don't see anybody with their hand up, I do see that we have one call in. Again, we will promote the call in person if you would like to, just as call in user number one. If you'd like to unmute, if you have a comment, we'll give you a couple of seconds, if not, I will move on, on the agenda. But I do like to give people a couple of extra time to see, like, we have Nicole, Nicole Armstrong, just raise your hand, so we are going to. Move, Ms. Armstrong, promote her and give her the opportunity to speak. And then we will continue moving forward, so Ms. Armstrong, you have. Been or will be promoted very quickly, and then you will have the opportunity to unmute, state your name and address, and we would love to hear your comment. You want to unmute? The floor will be yours, Ms. Armstrong.
Are we good now, can you hear me? Can you hear me? You can hear me, no, you can't hear me. I did unmute, I really did. Wait, okay, wait, let me see something.
I promise you that I, that I can hear you. Why couldn't you? We, we lost you. But if you want to unmute again and try to see there.
One more second, I got it, did, did you hear me now? No? All right, never mind, I'll, I'll call Ralph on my own, it's not a big deal, thanks. Never mind. I can unmute, I'm sorry, I don't know what the heck I did wrong, but, um, so.
She can't hear her.
I don't know, I mean, I thought I was good, but you know what, never mind, don't worry about it. Yeah, move on, I'm fine, I'll talk to Ralph myself.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, okay, no problem. Go ahead.
You're fantastic, we're sorry, sorry, I'm going to stay right now. Do we have, so we, we're going to move to caller one, or caller user one, let's see if we can get them unmuted if they have any comment, and then after that we can move forward. Outside of public comment into our ordinary items if we can. So let's give caller user a minute, if, if you would like to unmute, I'm going to give you a minute or so to do so. I, I recognize it's not always the easiest to manipulate technology, and so I don't like to kind of breeze past people. So we'll give a quick second, and then if I do not hear from you, we will move into what is a kind of. Heavy loaded agenda items, if you, if you will. But we will move to them relatively quickly. Okay, I haven't heard anything from caller user, so I'm going to close public comment at this time, move on to our ordinary items, beginning at number three, which is the minutes.
Mr. President, I move to accept the meeting minutes for the Monday, November seventh, twenty twenty two Borough Council Workshop Meeting. And the Monday, November fourteenth, twenty twenty two, regular council meeting.
Second, thank you, and thank you, is there any discussion on meeting minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And the minutes are accepted without opposition, moving on to the mayor's report, if you would like to give the reports and then we will move to, to the motion.
Mr. President, I, Chief Ron Actley has reported immediately that there were no critical significant incidents during the month of November twenty twenty two. Our officers handled a total of one thousand thirty seven events for a total of twelve thousand one hundred and twenty six year to date. Consisting of both calls for service and proactive patrol engagements and details resulting in nine arrests. Chief Ron Actley has reported that the total amount of magisterial fines collected for the month of November twenty twenty two was four hundred and thirty seven dollars and forty nine cents. The total for the year to date is six thousand two hundred and thirty eight dollars and eighty two cents. The department's police vehicles logged four thousand nine hundred and forty nine miles in the past month. The ticket summary for the month of November twenty twenty two was seventy three, with three non-traffic, five parking and sixty five traffic tickets. Churchill Police Department is honored once again to be participating. To participate in two annual holiday season events, they are the Blue Santa Toy Drive and Giveaway. And the Western Pennsylvania Athletic League's Toy Drive. Officers of our department have been participating in both events for several years now in an effort to do our part. To give back to those less fortunate in our borough and other local communities. Through these efforts, we, which take place year round with a collection of toys at several different locations. It is with sincere hope from all involved to make Christmas just a little bit more memorable and special for those children who will benefit from the event. Chief Actley and the department like to extend all wishes, a wish of all residents. And those who have served, who they serve a very merry Christmas and a very safe, happy and healthy new year. Details and other related statistics concerning the police department during the month of November twenty twenty two are. Are attached to the police department reports.
Thank you, outstanding.
Hey, Mr. President, I move to accept the mayor's report for November twenty twenty two.
Second, thank you, and thank you, is there any discussion on the mayor's report? Other than it continues to be a busy time and I'm hoping that the next report there's zero. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And the mayor's report is accepted without opposition, this moves us to the treasurer's report and bills.
Mr. President, I move to accept the treasurer's report for November thirtieth, twenty twenty two. And move to direct the finance officer to pay the bills for the borough of Churchill accrued since November twelfth, twenty twenty two.
Thank you, is there a second? Thank you, sir. As a matter of discussion, in terms of the bills, we always read any bill that's over the amount, it used to be a fifteen thousand, looks like we moved ten thousand, it all works for me. There was a time that we didn't have it on big screen, so it made a lot more sense, but still, it is worthwhile to make sure that we read it out loud because big expenditures should be know what we are doing. As a result, this month, it looks like we have five on, on the table. The first being excavation facility construction, the amount of forty five thousand seven hundred and sixty nine dollars and sixty six cents. We also have the twenty twenty two road program, which we nearly incorporated in the amount of twenty eight thousand seven hundred and thirty three dollars and ninety seven cents. Our engineering costs through gateway engineers, the amount of twenty five thousand ninety two dollars and sixty five cents. Our public works for the month through Big Leatti Landscape Construction, the amount of eighteen thousand nine hundred and twenty nine dollars and eighty one cents. And there was the Kingsdale Stormwater through Jet Jack who took care of that project in the amount of twelve thousand nine hundred and eighteen dollars. Was there any other discussion either on the paying of the bills or the finance report? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And the motion carries without opposition.
Mr. President, I would motion to adopt Borough of Churchill ordinance seven six six, amending Churchill Borough Code, chapter two five two. Solid waste by adopting a new solid waste recycling ordinance.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, any discussion, if you have a question?
So these are some of the updates to our solid waste and recycling, I think we discussed this a couple of times previously. One of the highlights is that we're changing the time, you know, typically we had said previously in the ordinance that cans had to be out. After six PM on the day before service and picked up by six PM the day after, we've changed that to five PM to eight PM the next day. In recognition that, you know, the sun goes down in the winter early, we don't want people out necessarily at night if they don't have to be. And then certainly folks that, you know, maybe get home from work, after that six PM time, they're not going to be, you know, fine for having the cans out, laws are in by eight PM there.
Thank you, any other discussion? I would just point out to individuals, if for any reason you are unable to bring your can out during that time because of being a disability related issue, if you contact the borough, we certainly can make. An accommodation for you under, under that circumstance. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And motion carries without opposition, moving forward to number.
Mr. President, I would motion to adopt Borough of Churchill ordinance seven six seven. Setting the Borough and Allegheny County Sanitary Authority Alka San twenty twenty three fees and charges to be assessed for sanitary sewage collection, transportation and treatment. In the schedule here, the twenty twenty three rates for Alka San for one thousand gallons will be ten dollars and forty one cents. Alka San quarterly charge will be twenty one dollars and eighty eight cents. The Churchill Borough rate for one thousand gallons will continue to be eight dollars and fifty cents, that has not increased. And then the total combined bill based on twelve thousand gallons is listed there on the chart.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the matter? Again, just pointing out that Churchill, we're trying to do our part in holding the line and not increasing our, our rates at all, unfortunately. Alka San, we have no control over that, as they try to deal with crumbling infrastructure, and so we see a little bit of nine dollars. Increase on, on that, it's important to be built. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
And motion carries without opposition, moving forward to number nine.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion to adopt the balanced twenty twenty three general fund budget. With revenues and income equaling three million one hundred and seventeen thousand two hundred and ninety eight dollars and sixty six cents.
Second, thank you, is there any discussion on the matter?
Mr. President, I just wanted to say regarding the budget, just to recognize the, all the work of our staff, Alex and Ashley. And including Michelle McAndrew, who has been on maternity leave for the last couple of months, but before that, she also put in a tremendous amount of work in. Getting this budget through, uh, over the course of this really entire year that, uh, at least since she's been here, so I wanted to be sure that we. Properly recognize all the hard work of our staff, uh, in getting this budget to where it is today.
We noted, and then we would be remiss if we did not include you and your committee in, in that as well, so. I, I agree with you and include for you in there also. Any additional discussion?
Just would like to say that the budget is being passed, hopefully without, well, we know without raising any of the property millage taxes. And so we are, we really work hard as a finance committee to. Look at the budget and keep in mind that we want to move Churchill Borough forward and continue to be innovative, but at the same time be fiscally responsible. In a way that does not require us to raise taxes this year. Very important for us.
Well said, it's something we all, we all stand strong on.
Yes.
So we, we, hence our appreciation to the work that's gone in and, you know, something I really. When we end up raising millage, when those moments happen, they happen because we have to, never because we want to. And so in moments like this, when we don't have to, we don't, we'll, we'll stop. So, uh, thank you for that point, well made. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And the motion carries without opposition, moving on to number ten.
Mr. President, I motion to adopt resolution four five four seven of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny. Mister President, I motion to adopt Resolution four five four seven of the Borough of Churchill County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Setting the twenty twenty-three real property tax levied on all real property within the borough. Subject to taxation for general borough purposes at the sum of eight mils on each dollar of assessed valuation. Or the sum of eight dollars on each one thousand dollars of assessed valuation.
Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion? Other than I think to point out what we just said, that this is the same as last year. We're not increasing the mill. Uh, as we try to, you know, ease whatever we can, the burden upon both ourselves and and the rest of our residents, because turns out we increased the the mill. We've increased it on not just our residents, but on ourselves and none of us, uh, myself included, on that unless we absolutely have to. Uh, so any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed and passes without opposition. Moving on uh to number eleven.
Mister President, I move to adopt Resolution four five four eight of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Enumerating non-union salaries for twenty twenty-three. Uh, Borough Manager Secretary, one hundred thousand eight hundred. Assistant Manager, sixty-four thousand fifty. Public Service Director, seventy-five thousand five hundred and seventy-five. Police Chief, one hundred and seventeen thousand six hundred, and Intern hourly, fifteen dollars.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Uh, so any discussion on the matter? Other than these folks working extremely hard for for their pay, uh, and mostly unpaid, that's it. Uh, any other discussion on the matter, though? Uh, hearing done, all in favor? Opposed and the motion carries without opposition. Moving on to number twelve.
Mister President, I move to adopt Resolution four five four nine of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Amending the general borough fee schedule for twenty twenty-three.
Second, thank you. Uh, any discussion on the matter? I require one on this one. Uh, it's been one that we've discussed before in terms of setting our fee schedule. Uh, it's not the any major increases, just us trying to set the schedule itself. Um, if there is nothing else, I just put that out there. Any other discussion?
No, I would just add, I guess, the comment that, you know, as our manager said, it's it's good due diligence to look at that every year, make sure we're. Not overcharging or undercharging, you know, as as we're reassessed, especially since a lot of those fees are based on subcontractors that we use and uh, you know, plan review, that kind of stuff. So. Uh, most of those are established that way and it's good to make sure we're checking it every year.
Good point. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing done, all in favor? And the motion carries without opposition. Uh, I'm gonna ask you a a point of privilege as we move into the next set of motions. We have kind of the appointment motions that come after this, which run thirteen. Uh, through seventeen. As a matter for the public, uh, currently, we don't really have uh. Appointees that we're ready to to move forward with for motion sixteen and seventeen, so we're gonna strike those from the agenda today. Uh, and then for motions thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen, unless council has objection. Uh, I would ask that that be done as a singular motion as written. Uh, and so unless I hear objection from someone. Which I'm gonna give a minute to discuss. Uh, I would ask that uh someone moved for a motion to accept thirteen, fourteen, and fifteen as written.
So moved.
He jumped you on it. I I got it down with this one, you know. Uh, you stole my computers. I don't know. It's all right. True enough. I still need a second. You're sleeping on me. Thank, thank you. Uh, any discussion of the matter?
I I just have a question. Matthew Curtis for the zoning hearing board, he's been reappointed. Is that correct? Or does a new candidate altogether?
Reappointed. That's a reappointment.
We had two persons who are eligible to be reappointed. Uh, both were asked and one individual declined. Fee reappointed, so we'll have to fill a position on the zoning hearing board sometime in January.
Excellent. Any other discussion on appointments other than to thank people for their willingness to serve the community? Uh, you know, I I will say that uh volunteering for Churchill is is a love. And uh, I appreciate anyone who's willing to uh to line up with the rest of us. So, thank thank them uh from the the bottom of my heart.
I'll just mention on the appointments, we we start number seventeen, but that is for the the Wilkins Penn uh Joint Water Authority. So. Anyone that is interested, please send a um resume and letter of interest into the manager. We've gotten a few, so. Uh, you know, if you're if you're still interested, it's not too late. I think we'll be accepting those till end of the year.
Well, thank you. All right. Uh, any other discussion? Hearing done, motion still on the floor. All in favor? Oppose and the motion searching for fifteen uh carry without opposition, as I said, sixteen and seventeen were struck. Uh, this moves us on to number eighteen.
Mister President, I motion to adopt Resolution four five five of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. Adopting a communications and social media policy use.
Second.
We've talked about this before um in the last meeting. It's really just um. To protect the borough's interest of technologies that we all use and how to use them right. Um, a lot of, you know, we have some common sense, obviously, but it's just good to have a policy. It's good practice.
It is it is great to have a policy, you know, you say that now, and in in the world that we have.
Yes.
Moved from, you know, what I like to think of is Churchill was living in a card catalog space not that long ago. To to a space in which we are constant in social media. I thank the committee for working on the policy. Uh, and I think it's important for the borough that that we have.
No disrespect to the Dewey Decimal System.
Let me say that now, all right? Six hundreds were much thought. Uh, any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed and motion carries without opposition. This moves us on to number nineteen.
Mister President, I would like to make a motion to adopt Resolution four five five six. Of the Borough of Churchill, County of Allegheny Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, appointing a new deputy tax collector per request. Of Daniel Weaver, the Churchill Borough Tax Collector. The current deputy tax collector is Carol Donahue. The tax collector would like to appoint Toby Weaver.
Second. Thank you. Any discussion? I didn't say that. I think it is, you know, as was explained, we've had some conversation about this, that that works in the to the benefit of. Uh, our residents, so that if our tax collector is unavailable, there's still somebody at the home with with the taxes that collected. Uh, so I appreciate that and uh I appreciate that we're doing the best we can to try and serve our residents. Uh, any other discussion?
I would just like to thank Ms. Weaver for her work this past year with collecting collecting property taxes. Um, and you know, a lot of the money that we get in from our property taxes is used for, you know, our operation expenses. And so we thank you for serving our community. We thank you for the work that you've done and we look forward to uh next year. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Well said.
Uh, any other discussion of the matter? All righty, all in favor? And motion carries without opposition. Moving us forward to number twelve.
Mister President, I would motion to direct the manager to submit the draft five G ordinance to the county planning for review. Subject to solicitor and manager approval as to form.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Yeah, so this is the, again, the ordinance, you know, for controlling small cellular uh five G um. Equipment in the borough. Uh, just did the review, you you know, over the last couple of months, we've discussed this and the committee's uh infrastructure committee has worked hard to. Get um as much protections built into our ordinance as we can. Uh, the Federal Communications Committee. You know, opened it up and said that basically they're allowed to come in, they're allowed to put these things kind of on top of telephone poles and other places. And there's really not a lot worth a lot to do to restrict it. So, within that uh available, you know, opportunity to restrict it and. Uh, obviously control to make sure we're we're getting a safe product and uh, you know, complying with federal standards. Uh, you know, we've drafted that ordinance and we will be sending it to county planning for the next step.
Uh, additional discussion? Uh, I would just point out, uh, you know, the the space of local government is is often working within what are the the federal and state laws. You know, there's a space of supersede, it says, those laws supersede our law, so we can only operate. Within the guidelines of what's presented to us. So I appreciate uh the committee's work to try and make sure that we can do the best that we can to have some control. There's very, to be quite frank, there's very little control that we're able to actually have. Uh, but I appreciate the work to try and create what we can in terms of control and try to be in front of this. And not kind of reacting to it later on down the line. So, uh, that is my my only points. Uh, any other discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed and again, the motion carries without opposition. This moves us on to number twenty-one.
Mister President, I would motion to direct the manager to submit the draft short-term rental ordinance to. Regulate Airbnb's in quotes expectations uh to the Allegheny County Planning Department, subject to solicitor and manager approval as to form.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
So, yes, this is uh again, just on the short-term rental, you know, as we've updated our ordinances. Uh, for inspection, health, safety, and welfare of the borough. Uh, this is another area that we've seen some issues here in the city and again, we want to work to. Get ahead of these before they become a problem. So, uh, this ordinance, you know, updates what's allowable for short-term rentals. And then, you know, what's required to uh apply to get a permit if you're going to run a short-term rental in Churchill, uh, as well as safety inspections and that kind of stuff.
Thank you. Uh, any other discussion on the matter? And just to get a, you know, some my thanks to the committee. I know it's been a very busy time. Uh, for your committee, with the number of ordinances you've been dealing with, and this is another one of us trying to kind of get in front of things. If we haven't had an issue per se. But before we end up with anything, that we've got something on the books to try and make sure that we have some parameters in which things are operating. Uh, any further discussion on the matter? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed and motion carries without opposition. Uh, this moves us forward to uh staff reports. Uh, discussion items you'll see on the number twenty-two. Uh, generally, I'm going to kind of ask what what I've got from folks, see what we have and uh. Move forward. I'll start with uh our our borough engineer over there. What do we got, sir?
I'm just uh very briefly, um, all paving and uh sewer repair work has been completed for the year. Um, so we we were trying to work with contractors to get every pay application completed uh and submitted. As you saw, some of them within the bills to be paid this month. Um, and then I also attended a through wet weather uh meeting last Thursday. Alex actually attended as well. One of their main focuses was funding for the sewer project. Um, the next step of the consent order is to actually develop the project and construct them in twenty twenty-five. Churchill again is in a good position there and that we've already completed our main project, but those uh uh. The funding cycles may even ramp up a little bit for the area, look at utilizing that for some of the other projects that we may be completing in. Twenty twenty-three and beyond.
Giant fan of funding not coming from uh our direct general fund or tax resources, right? So, appreciate that. Uh, anything else that you got for us?
Nothing else, unless there's any question.
People? All right, I'll go look easy. Uh, moving forward, Ralph, under both public works and fire?
Under fire, we're at uh four hundred and seventy calls for the year, which is pretty busy. Under public works, it's uh, we're just moving along, getting ready for the snow. Hopefully, we don't get any snow anytime soon. But we're doing uh normal business. That's it. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you. I like easier reports, even even busy. I'm sorry if I missed something going. Go ahead.
Uh, Ralph, I was just gonna ask for for comparison, about how many calls did the fire department have last year?
We had uh three hundred and ninety-seven last year.
So you guys have been extra busy.
Actually busy this year.
Yes, it's been been an unfortunately busy year. Yeah, this is the way they like to look at it. Uh, any other questions for uh either Ralph on his role in public safety or his role? Uh, having none, I'm gonna skip. I'll come back to you one second to ask, uh, um, Chief, do you have anything that you wanted to report on additional? Okay, if you don't, of course. Didn't want didn't want to skip you in the room.
Can I ask a question of the chief?
You certainly can.
Uh, I know we had a discussion, I think it was two meetings ago, about uh going for the officer testing. And I think during that discussion, there was a couple of questions on kind of like our typical staffing, overtime reports, that kind of stuff. Um, I wasn't sure, was that information ever provided to council? I might have missed it. I've been.
I I don't know that we we had kind of pushed the second time, make sure that we grabbed all of it in detail, so I will make sure that it like comes across. Because it's not that he's not reporting it, it's just bringing it over to councils. Well, I'll take care of that, make sure that he gets up.
Thank you.
I'll take I'll take that for you. Uh, anything else for the chief we've gotten? All right, let's move on to Alex and the magic of uh of trying to manage this borough.
Just quickly, thank you for uh setting our salaries on behalf of staff, you know, for the next year. Uh, it's a privilege to work in Churchill. And um just want to commend Chief Ackley. It happened that Ashley and Ralph and I were working together one day and nine-one-one call came in. Uh, motorists called nine-one-one, reporting that their three-year-old was choking in the backseat. They happened to pull into our parking lot, which was the place where they could find safety. It wasn't much that the words were out of person's mouth on the nine-one-one dispatch. And we're sitting there witnessing that Ron, who had happened to be in the building, runs out the front door. And into the parking lot. We can watch on the cameras. It was pretty uh distressing to see. Uh, to see him attend to that person, the motorist and the three-year-old. Um. Would like to report, maybe it could give you better detail than I could, that things worked well. It doesn't always work so well. We are very, if you want to say how, and and I believe the woman was here today.
Right, right, yeah. Mom stopped by today, gave a good report on the child. Um, unfortunately, he just uh, he died. He was diagnosed with uh. Uh, medical disorder that caused the incident that day. Um, but he's gonna do fine with some medication. Uh, he was in good spirits. He was here today running around the lobby. Mom dropped off some uh, some cookies and had some nice words to uh thanks for us. So. Yeah, I mean, it's always fortunate when things work out like that and there's a happy ending. So I appreciate it.
He was so on the spot. He flew out that building. It was amazing. Uh, it was great to see. We're very, very um, very well served by Ron Ackley.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I I would act as if I'm surprised, right? But, you know, we we are, and and I'll tell you, as new residents, we we are really fortunate. We have a. A really quality group of folks in our police department, who we work, who work pretty hard with our community to have a good relationship. So. Uh, thank you, Ron, and certainly send a, you know, some my thanks, as is always said, to all the all the guys who live in the department. So. Uh, for that matter. Anything else that you got, sir?
Well, we should note that we have, what, fifteen participants online, besides us in the room, the other staff members show online.
Awesome. There was there was a time when that number was tenfold. In some ways, I do not wish to to return to that, in some ways I do. Uh, which solicitor, anything on the table today? Nothing for me. Thank you then. All right, I appreciate it. Uh, I will ask individuals around the table, uh, if there's any comments or discussion you'd like to have outside, it's been discussed already. Uh, that I will close up and get us out here. Uh, starting to, it's Mary Brooks.
Okay. Um, I would just like to thank the Allegheny County Public Works Department for responding to the request to pay Brinsburg High. I hope that the residents are very happy with the new road. Um, I also would like to commend the. Performing Arts Department of Woodland Hills High School. I recently, as of Saturday, attended the Avenue Q performance. Um, that they did at the high school and I was extremely impressed. Um, I would also like to just thank all of the residents who attend our meetings, who provide public comment. Who write emails and are just active and involve engaged citizens. I really just thank you. Um, it's been a wonderful year. There's been some loss, uh, but we have pushed through and we are here. So, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you. Seth?
Well, I also would like to thank the council before I came aboard. I know what all of you went through for months and months and months with the whole Amazon situation and it was very arduous and. Long, long, long hours and um I don't know if everyone really appreciates all of your work. That everyone did. I had nothing to do with it because I wasn't a council member yet. So I also just really want to thank everybody. And also a reminder that Santa Claus is coming to Churchill on Saturday, the seventeenth. And um if you go on our website, there's the route. Some people have asked, you know, why isn't my street on? Why isn't my street on? We, you know, we do basically the same route that we do with the Easter Bunny Parade. We've had to eliminate a couple of streets because we have the. Um, fire truck and there are some streets that the fire truck has a difficult time getting onto this, into the street and around the street. Uh, of course, if it's an emergency, that's something different, but uh in this case, we had to eliminate a couple of streets. But if you know the route and you're a nearby. in this case, we had to eliminate a couple of streets, but if you know the route and you're a nearby street, you want to take your kids to see Santa, this is a rare opportunity. He's very, very busy, but he's making a stop to Churchill for a few hours. Saturday, December, I'm sorry, December, uh December seventeen uh beginning at ten AM. So go on our website to check out the route. And Merry Christmas, Happy New Year, Happy Hanukkah, everything. Happy holidays.
Let me move out of the building and over to uh to Adam, if she'd like to floor.
Uh not much to add from um what Devin Brooke already said, just, you know, thank yous to, you know, everyone on council for all the work. I know all the work everyone puts into this and for another successful year, and thanks to our staff, um Alex, Ralph, Ashley, Michelle, uh everyone who's just helped out the borough over the course of the year, who are missing anyone, I'm sorry, and to our residents for uh, you know, paying attention and, you know, joining us for these meetings and and all of your comments. So we we do appreciate all of it.
Thank you. So I won't skip you, Mister Mary.
Save me for last, I'm glad.
There is nothing else left to say. Everybody has said everything. Uh but one of our biggest goals this year as the chair of the Communications Committee is to in increase our engagement and increase our communication uh with our residents, and I think we're seeing a lot of that turning over and being positive. I see a lot more people on Zoom. I every time we get a lot more um people on Savvy Citizen. New residents, if you have not signed up for Savvy Citizen, it is an app. Please sign up. If you have any questions, please feel free to talk to me afterwards. I'm here if you have any questions. So it's it's good seeing more uh resident engagement. So thank you for that, and of course, thank you to staff for everything that you do.
I'll echo everyone else's comments and thanks, you know, to our staff, our residents, uh of course, our other council members. Um you know, ha- happy holidays to all our residents and everyone else. Uh have a wonderful New Year, and I will say uh be safe, uh be kind, make sure you check on your neighbors as we enter the the winter season, you know? Don't be afraid to go over and knock on somebody's door if they haven't been around for a while, or, you know, folks that uh maybe aren't as mobile, uh you know, don't be afraid to go over and and take your snow shovel and help out.
Thanks, sir. Mister Mayor, I want you to floor.
Board George. Thank you, thank you. Um I have one com- one comment to Kate, uh she's still on, um that was wasn't mentioned. There is some interest in the other communities, Wilkins, Forest Hill, and Benals as well. Um we get something going, the Ad-Off Committee, I already talked to some of those members. Um once we get going, they're interested in in becoming involved in a plan to, you know, with for the dear situation. So that is in the in the workings. Um the other thing I I wanted to just congratulate council, Alex, Ashley, uh Allison, Michelle, for all the work they did on that budget. You know, sitting from from my position and watching everything that's going on, the numbers, the charts, everything, and come up with that balanced budget and not having to raise the mileage, you know, fantastic. They did a great job. Um Facebook, if anyone's on Facebook, you notice that I've been going around the borough and taking pictures of the holiday decorations. I've asked people, if you take a picture and send it to me at pgame at churchaborough.com, I will post the pictures, because residents don't have that uh capability of posting the pictures. So if it's been coming along good, I open my mail every day, and there's a couple people from different streets that sent them in, I post the pictures as quickly as I can. So that's turned out to be uh a a nice little um you know, gesture for the holidays. And I was gonna say something about Santa, and uh, you know, he's coming in the town. I did hear from him the other day. Definitely, you know, he's confirmed the the seventeen, so he will be here. Maybe thank you for that. The other thing I wanted to say with the Recreation Board, I met with them again the other night, and the work that they're doing planned for next year is just top-notch. We got a lot of things coming down the line with the the community dinners, the the big uh uh annual Community Day, we're gonna have again next year at some time in August. There's a lot of things. I see a lot, you know, a group of people doing a lot, a lot of work to do things in our borough. Um and oh, last thing, just to thank all the committees that we have on council, and I I sit in uh as many of the um committee meetings I can, and I see all the hard work that everyone does. And I say that not only for council, but you know, any residents working, watching, just to see what these council members put into that. And I I applaud them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh just listening to to what everybody's saying, and I have to to reflect on the fact that we've been through a couple of very difficult years. Uh and it just feels really good for people to be able to get down to work with their committees, to get creative, to assess the needs, to identify the resources. Everyone is so diligent, and I feel like we're back on track. I I want to uh thank everybody on the council, and certainly our staff, uh uh and and our police chief. Um you and I met a little while ago, and his modesty is impressive, because he never mentioned to me that he saved a child's life in our parking lot recently. Uh we were talking earlier today about the fact that, you know, in Churchill, uh our police officers very often get the most difficult things from out of left field. There's an instantaneous response, uh and uh I'm I'm grateful. Um and everybody be safe over the holiday, enjoy family and friends. But uh you know, use some wisdom. So thank you. I'll see you in January.
Well, that again, as always, leaves uh me between everyone going home, so I will I will be brief. At the end of the year, I try to make sure everybody has a minute to have a comment. Uh mine is fairly simple. I I've been on council now for thirteen years. Uh I love this community. I I love the people, I love my neighborhood, I love my direct neighbors, uh and I love folks on council, the staff. We are fortunate here. We are, you know, I tell people, I live in this kind of oasis, it it's everybody here cares about our community, and by everybody, I don't just mean the people at the table. So this year has been, you know, the end of a really tough chapter, the beginning of kind of coming back to kind of a a normal space, and that's the development space was really tough, COVID was really tough. Um I want to give a particular thank you to all of the people who came out and took me to task. Right? Whether I agree with you or didn't agree with you, whether you were out protesting at some point, or you were here saying, hey, I have a hundred percent your support. I just really am appreciative that we have a community that cares about what's happening in Churchill. So I just wanted to say that all my regular thank yous to staff and to the rest of council, everything that everybody else said holds true. Um but I think sometimes we forget that it's the people that hold our feet to the fire, right, that make us better people. And so I just wanted to put that out there. Uh having said that, uh I wish everybody a very happy holiday. My my daughter does Christmas and Hanukkah, so she just loads up on gifts. Uh and so she is expecting a lot out of me, so we'll see what happens. Uh with that being said, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. So moved. Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, game's set, match. Thank you, everybody for coming out. I appreciate y'all.